All right, let's start the meeting and I'll call the meeting to order. Sorry for any delays. Is it necessary to do a flag salute?
We usually do, we just kind of all stand.
That's fine. I'll leave the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic which stands one nation. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Invisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Just a housekeeping matter, Mr. Anderson, Kevin Anderson, I've asked you to unmute yourself, sir. If you want to go ahead and try to unmute so we can make sure we have you on the record as unmuted. Great, and I'm just gonna make sure that Peter Gorseau here is listed as planning commission and we should be good to go, Rochelle.
Thank you.
All right, is everybody on board to do a roll call?
We are. So Chairman, Chairman Garman?
Here, present.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
And Commissioner Gorsel?
Here.
Thank you. After a review of the meeting of the minute, excuse me, of the last meeting from November 9th, are there any changes, amendments, or would you like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
The motion by John Richardson, who is the second by?
I did.
Ron Jensen.
Okay, Ron. Um, um, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
I have to.
Aye.
No, I have to do a roll, I have to do a roll call, so we'll have to do it that way. Uh, Chris, okay, Chairman Garman?
Aye.
Vice Chair, um, and Richardson?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Jensen? Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Gorsel?
Aye.
Thank you.
And just one other thing, as a housekeeping measure, sorry, this is Mary Rose, City Administrator. When you make a motion and a second, please state your name. There are commissioners on the phone, so we can't see your face. So please just state your name if you're making a motion or a second. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Rose, it's a good idea. All right, moving along, public appearances. Per California state law, matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff or placed on the next meeting's agenda. Anyone wishing to address the committee at this time will be limited to five minutes. Anybody that would like to address the commission about any matter not already on the agenda?
So at this time, we're asking for public comment on non-agendized, um, items. If you have a public comment to make, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature on the Zoom. Or if you're on a phone line, please dial star six and I will unmute you and lower your hand. So again, these are for non-agendized items. And I am looking right now for any hands to be raised. And just because this is our first time too, I'm gonna scroll through the faces to see if I see any hands raised in the audience. And at this time, commissioners and Rochelle, I do not see any public comment.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move along to the public hearings. Application by Kenneth Hedges, first item here is application by Kenneth Hedges for use permit to allow for a micro brewery in the existing building and design review approval to install either a single or double smooth metal door along the Field Street building frontage. Located at 131 South Washington Street in a commercial zone. Assessor parcel number is 001-195-014. Staff?
Thank you. Yes, before you guys tonight, we do have an application for a new micro brewery in our downtown. And they are looking at placing the brewery down at the old Legends location. Um, and we, he will meet all of the requirements as far as the definition of a micro brewery under our code. Um, so he will not exceed the requirements that are placed within that. Um, and he also understands that it's for in, uh, in-store purchase. Um, so we did take a look at the project from, for the use permit side of it. Um, and also for design review, he does, um, as you know, we've included for both a single door and a double door. Um, he does prefer to go with a smooth metal door, he really wants it to be unobtrusive and just kind of blend with the painted wall on that side. Um, they, um, the, uh, they're not sure on the size of the door. Um, in fact, they might not have to put the door in and I'm sure that he'll explain that to you. It just depends on what they need as to get the equipment in for the brewery. So we told them we'd move forward with both options and that way, we didn't want him to have to come back and go through this process all over again. Um, the site is designated, um, that location is commercial under the city zoning and it is commercial under the general plan as well. Um, the def, the micro brewery is consistent with that. Um, our understanding is he's going to have similar products, um, beyond, as currently are in Legends. Uh, the existing Legends store, um, as well as the micro brewery, he's adding that as a separate, um, thing into the, the location. Um, we, um, did find it was consistent with just, uh, the general plan. And we did, uh, include some, uh, general plan policies that are in your packet that, uh, that show that it is consistent. Um, it is, like we said, at the former Legends location on the corner of Field and South Washington Street. Um, the, um, uh, use is consistent with our, uh, code. Um, and the design, um, we looked at design, like I said, um, we did find that, um, it is compatible. Um, with the surrounding building and it is something that would not, um, be obtrusive. It is really not gonna be visual, uh, from South Washington Street. I included that in your packet. The, um, the door is actually gonna be located closer to the Stewart Street side of the building along Field Street, not the Washington side. Um, so we included, I included a picture in there to show where exactly it would be. And how, um, non-visible it is from South Washington Street. You really would have to really look for it if you were driving up the street and you couldn't see it if you were driving down the street. We did do a public notification on this, um, and we did, um, include conditions of, from some of the comments that we received uh, from, uh, city staff as well as TUD. Uh, we did attach the condition or the, sorry, the comments that were provided by the Twomey Heritage Committee, so you can see those, they are attached to the staff report. Um, we do find that it's exempt, um, as a minor, uh, change to an existing facility under CEQA. Um, and we do have findings that were made. Um, the findings that we recommend are that the use is desirable at the specific location. It's consistent with the intent of Title 17. And with the purpose, um, with the purposes of the zones in which it is located. The proposed architectural modifications conform with the features found in the original building and surrounding commercial properties. Um, the proposed exterior architectural features reflect the traditional architect characteristics of the community or blends with the adjoining adjacent neighborhood. And is consistent with applicable design standards. Like I said, he really wants to do the smooth door, he wants to have it not be too conspicuous, but just blend in with the wall on the side there on Field Street. And it is just a block wall on that side. Um, as you can see in the pictures, the, um, the, uh, sorry, the conditions, um, are our standard conditions. Um, the use becomes effective within 10 days of your guys' approval, it's good for a, valid for a year. Um, and they have to start within that year period. Um, there are some, several conditions that were added for TUD, um, they have a new process. Um, so we're seeing this on all of the applications that we've been submitting to them. Um, and you'll see there are several, um, items that are listed and these come out of their new process. So the applicant will have to work with TUD to assure that, um, they comply with the requirements related to water, sewer, backflow devices. Uh, any, if they are recent, uh, interceptor is required. And then there is a user fee and a capacity fee charge that they're gonna have to work with TUD on. Um, the, like I said before, it is for onsite sales of the brewery, um, that's one of the requirements under the code. Um, or can, or consumption there. Um, the, um, that is the only other condition that we have, other than the one condition that we added. Um, if they, the building, the doors are gonna have to open into the building, cause if they open out, um, if they open to the exterior, they will interfere with both the sidewalk and possibly, uh, the street. So, uh, we, we are requiring that the doors open in if they are, um, in need. I know the applicant is on here tonight, um, so he is available, Chairman, um, so, Mr. Chairman, for any comments.
Thanks, does that conclude your, uh, staff report, Rochelle?
It does.
Thank you, is the, is the applicant here?
Yes, Ken is on there.
Looking for Mr. Hedges.
Hold on, just let me make sure that he, he's unmuted, oh great, he's good to go.
All right, hi there, uh, my name's Kenneth Hedges, I go by Casey, this is my mother, Lisa Hedges, and my brother Ryan West. Uh, we're all natives of Sonora, actually, all three of us went to Columbia Elementary School, graduated Sonora High School. Um, I was born right down the street, actually. Um, I also, I own, uh, Little Roots Toy Shop right across the street from, uh, the Legends bu, building. And we're all, you know, local history buffs and, uh, you know, we do some for fun and love this town, love to, you know, try and make it better also. Um, our proposal, uh, for the use permit is to be able to brew beer in the Legends location in the back room where, uh, Margie Fromm used to sell antiques. And, oh yeah, we'd love to have it kind of a little pub feel on the corner there. Part of, and as far as the, uh, second request for the door, uh, the primary usage for that would be, um, bringing in and out grain. And also for our, uh, brewing system, our tanks are, uh, gonna be larger than any of the entrances into the building. And so we think that it would be, uh, most easy to open up with this, well, actually was a previous doorway, an existing doorway that just got cinder blocked up. Um, can't tell when exactly, but, uh, yeah, we wanna reopen the doorway and get some more access. Uh, the, the landing kind of interferes with our brewing area and that's why we, we'd almost rather not have it, but we wanted to include it in this design review application since we were doing the use permit.
Okay.
Seen, Legends is one of the most beautiful buildings on the street as an amazing, uh, mahogany back.
Freezing, Rochelle?
I think, yeah, I think he's.
From, the previous owner of Legends is on the call here. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're kinda losing you, Ken.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's about all I have to say. Um, I, you know, I look forward to being able to, to serve this county and, and, uh, you know, make that spot even more iconic than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges, this is, this is Commissioner Chris Garman. Um, I have a question just about the service, is, is, the, the doors on the side facing Field Street, are those basically service doors?
Yes, that's the idea, not for, uh, public access, uh, necessarily, I mean, emergency exit, sure, but, uh, just service doors, yes.
Sure, I have no, I have no problem with that. I'm curious, were you gonna put any kind of an overhang over those doors, like a little canvas, uh, overhang roof or something to keep them out of weather?
It wasn't necessarily, although, um, I, I'm sure it's an option, I think right above that door is our PG&E meter. And so I, I'm sure there may be a way to, to fit that in somehow.
Okay, and one, one last question for me, uh, were you gonna paint those doors the same color as the exterior wall of the building?
Yes, it would be the same color as the exterior of the building, we do want it to be pretty inconspicuous.
Great, well personally, I'm excited about your project, I'll open it up for any other questions from other commissioners to you.
No questions from Ron Jensen.
Any questions from the other commissioners?
No question.
Ron Jensen.
Everybody good with the applicant's presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great, great, well, thank you, Ken Hedges, I appreciate it. Um, I'll move on to the public hearing now, is there anybody that would like to speak to this project?
So again, um, we're moving on to the public hearing portion, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature in the Zoom function. Or if you are on a phone line, please dial star six, which will raise your hand and I will ask you to unmute and lower your hand. So commissioners, I'm just looking to see if I see any hands raised. I am just going to, just to make sure, uh, Rochelle, I'm gonna unmute Sharon just in case.
Yes, she might.
Sharon, I, can you dial star six to try to unmute yourself at this point, just in case you have a comment? You're unmuted, Sharon.
Oh, okay, yeah, uh, Twomey Heritage Committee, we had a comment regarding the doors, uh, thought that perhaps uh, either raised paneling or some trim might make them look a little more old fashioned. But your staff and the applicant has explained the reason why they want just a smooth, uh, industrial looking door and we accept that.
Thank you, any other comments from the public?
Margie, uh, Margie's waving her hand at you.
Okay, hold on just a second, let me make sure I go ahead and unmute her. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Margie. I've asked you to unmute.
Can you hear me? Yep. Okay, hi, I'm Margie Paxton Fromm and, um, I'm the former owner of this building. I, um, am so excited for these guys to be doing what they're doing, they're gonna, it's gonna be a great thing, it's a wonderful family, I couldn't have asked for uh, better follow-up from what I've done and I think that they are appreciative of the historic value of the building, the, um, you know, it is, it is really an iconic building, um, we've had people from all over the world, we get publications that we don't even know we've interviewed for that, um, I'll hear from someplace in Australia. Uh, it's a, it's a wonderful building and it's a good representation of Sonora. And I, I'm so supportive of anything these guys are doing, cause I think the door is just gonna add, you know, more, uh, you know, it's gonna be helpful for them to make their business successful. And that's what we want and that's what we wanna support. So I really hope, uh, that you guys support them, I think they're, I, I think they're gonna just do a great job and I think they're gonna be here for, I was there for 20 years, I think they're gonna be there for at least 20. So, uh, that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you very much, Margie.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the commissioners?
I am looking, planning commissioners, and I don't see any other hands raised at this time, we'll just do one more call. If you have a, a public comment, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, or if you're on a telephone, please dial star six. And at this time, um, there are no public comments.
Okay, very good, I'll close the public hearing then, bring it back to the commission, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'll make a motion if, uh, we're ready, this is Ron Jensen.
I'll second.
So Ron, you're good, and who's the second one?
To approve. I'll make a motion to approve the use permit and design review permit with the following four findings and the seven conditions.
Very good, and who is the commissioner that made the second?
I, I did.
And who are you?
You gotta say your name, hon.
Peter Diorso.
Okay, so motion by Commissioner Jensen, second by Commissioner Diorso, any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the question, all those in favor, we'll do a roll call, go ahead, Rochelle.
Chairman Garman?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Richardson? John, you need to unmute yourself.
I don't see him any longer, Rochelle?
He's on my screen, he gets muted.
Oh boy.
Why don't you get him to raise his hand then for an eye vote?
He's on the phone.
On the phone. Uh, dial star six, John, to unmute yourself. Star six, John.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson? And Commissioner Diorso?
Aye.
John, you can leave yourself unmuted, the planning commissioners don't have to mute themselves, okay?
Right, uh, I got lost on the muting process, I had some comments, but I hit star six and nobody picked up on me, so I'm unmuted now, so you can hear me, right?
We can hear you now.
Okay, let's go on, I'm okay, don't worry about the past.
Okay.
Sounds like it passed by unanimous vote.
Yes, five zero.
Very good, thank you very much to Hedges' family and appreciate your, uh, investment in downtown Sonora, good luck on your venture, you're, we're welcoming you to, to do your thing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, let's move to the next item. Item number two. Be an application by Aspen Street.
I'm unmuted now, they're doing.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wait, I can hear you.
Okay, item number two is an application by Aspen Street Architects Incorporated for site plan and design review approval to allow the construction of an 8,075 square foot mixed-use building on an existing 18,987 square foot parcel within the Downtown Plaza Shopping Center. This is located at 180 Stockton Street, the assessor parcel number is 001-280-011. This is in a commercial zone. Staff?
Thank you. Let me preface this by saying that I think this is a great multi-use, um, it's a great way for us to get some housing and our, much-needed housing in our town. Um, and so just with saying that, I think it's a, I hope to see that we get some more projects like this with a commercial, with the residential combination. I, I think this'll really help especially for some of our low-income housing needs as far as, um, uh, for people that just wanna rent a nice place to rent in our downtown. So with that said, I am gonna go through the, uh, project, but I just wanted to say that I, I'm really excited about this type of a project and I hope that we can bring some more of them to you in the future. Um, it is located in the, down in the Downtown Plaza, it is at 180 Stockton Street. Uh, staff's been working with the applicant, um, Aspen Street Architects and also the owner, uh, the owner on this is First Shopping Center LLC. Peter Dwares, and I know Peter is with us tonight as well. Um, and, um, he owns the, both sides of the shopping center, he owns the old Bertelli's side as well as the, um, shopping center, the Lower Save Mark Shopping Center area. Um, the, uh, new, uh, the construction of the new building, the building is, uh, proposed for 8,075 square feet. Um, again, it's a mixed use and it's, uh, gonna be placed on the vacant lot that, uh, exists between Bert, the old Bertelli's and the shopping center. Um, that was previously owned by the Danbacher family and for a time, it actually was fenced off from, uh, the subdivision, but, um, uh, Sonora, uh, First Sonora Shopping Center bought that lot and now it is, um, all under one ownership. The, um, proposed two-story building, it includes, uh, 3,210, uh, 3,272 square feet of ground floor commercial. Um, and that would, um, they're proposing for either restaurant space or, uh, retail space in that location. Um, and then includes the multifamily above, um, which, it's five units. Uh, we have two one-bedroom, two two-bedroom and one studio apartment. Um, we have included the project plans attached to the staff report, so the full set of plans that were submitted are there for you, um, to look at. Um, the project's located in the commercial zoning district and the commercial general plan. It is, um, um, includes, um, I'm gonna talk about the site plan now, excuse me. The site plan, uh, the currently, the site is currently paved, there was a, a point, like I said, where it was fenced off from the rest of the shopping center. Uh, it does fill some overflow parking for that center at one time, um, again, but it was, um, not being used for a long period of time. Um, the, um, the building, um, the proposed building will include 21 parking spots, uh, two of which will be accessible. The drive aisle, uh, is compliant with our city standards and it connects, uh, the former Port, Bertelli's site to the rest of the shopping center, it connects everything together. One exit, um, onto Highway 49 is being removed, Stockton Road, uh, streets, sorry, but it, um, it was one that, um, is a little troublesome with site distance anyways. So, um, there, the remaining exits from the shopping center remain and entrances. Um, the, um, 16 spars, parking spaces are, uh, for, dedicated for the commercial or for the commercial area. Um, and that meets the requirement for the 200, one unit per every, or one space for over 200 square feet. Um, and then there are additional five parking spaces dedicated for the residential units. Um, and that will be, uh, located between, behind a gated area. Um, and there, like I said, there will be five spaces, which is one per unit. That is, um, actually, uh, our code requires a 1.5 space, but staff is, uh, recommending approval. Uh, we look at the shared commercial parking that's available for those, uh, right, uh, apartment areas. Um, also, um, it is common for people that live in, in those types of situations to not have as many vehicles, especially as close as you are to your downtown area where they can walk. Um, and, um, and normally, um, your residential use is gonna be more in the evenings and your commercial more in the daytime. We are, do not have a concern with the fact that those other 2.5 or three spaces will be accommodated in the commercial parking space that's already available in the shopping center. So we are recommending approval with just the five spaces. On the, uh, other side of the building, we'll have, uh, there'll be a private common patio area, um, for the, um, tenants of the residential space. And it will, um, also be ga, uh, fenced from the, um, re, the commercial part of the subdivision. Um, so that is kind of the site plan layout, TUD, um, again, like I talked about a little bit earlier, there are several requirements under their new review process that they're gonna have to work through with TUD. And I know that Nate's on the phone, uh, with Aspen Street Architects or on with us tonight. Um, but he, they are aware of those and he'll, he has already started working with TUD on this project. Um, and then on the design review analysis, um, we have, um, seen a couple versions of this, um, they have made some changes, um, prior to their final approval for the planning commission. Um, the building again, it's a two-story, a two-story building, it does include a tower, um, area, um, in the clock tower in the middle. Um, there, uh, it does have a brick facade, um, for the front and stucco on the sides. Um, the, um, we have a balcony and we have some, uh, wood trim, painted wood trim, as well as some metal, um, uh, accents to the bout, uh, to the tower. Uh, the wi, the windows are arched, um, and they do have a, a cement plaster around. Um, the side, uh, on the sides of the building, you do have some balcony areas for the tenant spaces, they do have awnings on them. And there is an awning post for the front of the building. Um, the project is located outside of the historic area, uh, the design review historic area, um, for, but it is, uh, subject to design review. Um, and many of this, uh, design elements, as I state in here, are found in other buildings within the downtown area. And it will, the brick facade, facade will blend, bent, sorry, will blend with the adjoining Westerly building. Um, and the cutlery will complement, um, the surrounding areas. And it will greatly improve the existing site and provide a nice entrance into the historic downtown. the surrounding areas, and it will greatly improve the existing site and provide a nice entrance into the historic downtown. We find it consistent with zoning. We find it consistent with the general plan. Again, I think it's a great use, a multi-use of some of our commercial spaces. And, you know, being three square miles, we don't have a lot of opportunity for housing, so it is nice to see this, and it will also help, hopefully, to enhance the shopping center by having that use down there as well and, and just kind of revitalize that center area. We did do noticing, and we did our 300 feet noticing as well. We've incorporated our TUD's comments into our conditions, and we did attach the comments by the Twomey Heritage Committee. And those are the only comments that we've received to date. We do find that the project is exempt under the infill allowance under, what? Under section 15332, class 32 for infill development. And we did include findings for design review. And we are recommending approval with the findings that we show there. We show four findings for this project. And I'm not going to go through and read them all, but there, we did include findings for your approval. And again, we have TUD's conditions in there, and they're on there. We do require that they coordinate with Sonora Fire to make sure that they meet the fire flow requirements. We also need a lighting analysis for any of the lighting that will be out in the parking lot. We are requiring, there is a landscape area which is unique for this shopping center. It will have some landscaping. It has not in the past, so that's a really nice feature for that area, a nice addition. It will, it will be required to get, do a landscape plan and submit it through the city's parks and recreation and beautification. So that is all that I have on my staff report. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and I do know that applicant representatives are on the meeting tonight.
Anybody on the commission have any questions of staff before we move to the applicant?
I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Where, I want to be clear on where the the individuals that stay there, where will they enter the building? I'd like to hear that from the developer.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll volunteer that. Let's, let's see if you have any other questions of staff first, and then we'll move on to the applicant.
Okay, that's fine. No, I'm fine. I can wait for the developer to get his questions. I have one question I guess I would also address here. There's the Historical Society has some concerns about the dormer and the roof line and all that, and I understand their plight. However, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the building's appearance right now, and to change the architecture design would be a major project. That's my feeling. I don't know if it's necessary to make those changes.
Well, thanks for your input there, John. Anybody else have any questions of staff before we move to the applicant?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, who's this?
Peter, Yorso. If you notice, behind, good, behind the drugstore, Lanenburg Street is falling down. And, you know, the bank is receding. Would it be advisable to talk to the developer architect that he might want to put a retaining wall behind his building? Because it appears that that erosion is getting bigger all the time.
So, Chris, that is actually a city street, and the city is looking at what improvements need to be done there. The city engineer has been monitoring the situation and has actually talked with the architect on this. So that really is a city and property owner issue. We will be working through that.
Good, good.
Does that answer your question, Peter?
Yes, it does.
Very good. Kevin or Ron, do you have any questions of Rochelle?
No. No, I'm interested.
Okay, great. Okay, is the applicant or his representative here with us tonight?
Yes, hi. This is Nate Morgan with Aspen Street Architects. We are hired by the developer to work on this project and happy to discuss it a little bit here. Also have Ezra Ivy, who's our project architect, on the line and can answer some questions as well. And of course, we've got Peter Dwares, who's the owner of the whole complex, on the line. As Rochelle said, this is an inbuilt project with the main goal to complete the void in the shopping center. It's to tie it all together and to do so in a way that's consistent with the local context and to complement the historical aesthetic of downtown Sonora. It's also a goal to make this a little bit of a landmark for the plaza and potentially for a gateway from Highway 108 to the beginning of the kind of historical part of town. Lastly, it attempts to meld the mixed use, the commercial residential aspect that Rochelle talked about, that's highly desirable, providing much-needed apartment space while offering potential amenities and commercial attraction. I know that a commercial tenant is not currently online for this, and Peter can maybe talk a little more to that. But we did look at a lot of options, and this really is a balance of many factors, including overall square footage, overall building costs, parking requirements, landscape requirements and such. So Peter, I don't know if you want to add a little something?
Eric Ress, can you unmute Peter?
Hello, folks?
There he is.
Good evening. I really haven't, I haven't anything to add except that we bought kind of a unattended, nice little shopping center gateway to Old Town a number of years ago, and we've done what we can to spruce it up. It's Save Mart, and we put the hospital in there and lost a couple of tenants, the bank. And it's been a bit of a struggle, and we've had a homeless issue, as you know, and some drug issues, and we worked out an arrangement with Gary Danbacher and bought the empty property in the middle where a lot of homeless stayed. And through Rochelle, we met Nate Morgan and Ezra and wanted to put something in that empty space that would be reminiscent of the days of Gold Country, not replicative, but reminiscent. And we love the brick look. We love the dormer, and it the building is to tie the center together and really make it the entrance to Old Town. And you know, I love what the architects have done. They're creative. They have the answers to the details that you may raise, and the overall look is what the reason I'm doing it. It was mentioned to me in the beginning, you know, put up a square box and just fill it in and rent it out or try to, and we've had a lot of trouble even leasing the commercial there. It's not easy, trust me. And it hasn't been a moneymaker, but it's kind of a a pet, something that I'm very interested in. I just love the town, love the history, want to help improve it. This is, I'm older, and this is sort of one of the things that I'm doing, you know, for my family, and we keep stuff a long time when I do something. And I think that's, really, that's it. The rest, all the details I'll leave to you folks that have questions to Nate and Ezra, and if Rich is there, he can add. And we have really good people on this, so I hope you'll approve it, and I hope we can all enjoy it. I hope it's, it works out, get leased, and brings in nice tenants there, and I hope in some way that over time you all as city leaders can find a way to perhaps tie it up to Washington Street. Make the trails on the outside or sidewalks more inviting, maybe some cobblestone, who knows, but it's a precious little historic area, Sagora, and it's, it's got a it needs to be polished a little bit down there, and that's about it. And I thank you for listening.
Hello, this is Ezra Ivy with Aspen Street Architects. I think there was a question about where the entry was for the tenants on the second floor. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
So the entry would be at the base of what we're calling the tower element, that central door would take stairs up to all of the apartments. Then, of course, if there's a fire emergency, then they would have egress typical to any residential, you know, through their windows and doors at their balconies.
Thank you. I got, got, thank you for that answer.
Sure.
Commissioners, does anybody have any other questions for the developer or owner or the architect while we have them lead up here?
Well, I have a question.
Yes, John?
John Richardson, yeah, I have a question about the landscaping out there. What, what is, I kind of hear the word landscaping, but I see a lot of asphalt, and I'm just kind of curious as to what type of landscaping they're planning for that, whether it be trees or planter boxes or what. I just kind of like to know.
Sure, John. This is Nate with Aspen Street. So the landscape area would be between the sidewalk and the access aisle and parking. It's kind of a varying width, a couple feet minimum, but there's going to be a couple areas where it stretches out to almost 20 feet, I think. Ezra, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but
Yeah, just about.
Yeah, we'll have to submit a landscape plan as part of the permitting package. So it'll be consistent with, you know, requirements for the city. You know, we would, we would love to have some trees in there as long as they're not blocking any sightlines, access out onto Stockton and general ground cover, something that's kind of a little on the lower maintenance side of things.
Sir, I can barely hear you. This is Chris Garnett. I can barely hear you. Can you speak a little closer to your phone?
I apologize. Yeah, there's a landscape area along between the sidewalk and the access aisle. And it, there's no definite design right now, but that will have to be submitted as part of the permitting package. It'll be consistent with city requirements as far as, you know, types of vegetation and whatnot. We would love to have some trees in there. But that's kind of the idea of it there. It ranges from probably four feet, six feet, to close to 20 feet, kind of varies in width along the sidewalk.
Right. I, I'm hearing you well now. I appreciate what you're saying. I realize the city and you will be working on that, and I think the city will be into a good situation there, and it will be needed. But I'm sure there can be some answers, trees planted. That would be great if that could be done, but thank you for your answer. I'm just curious what you were thinking. Do you have to take the asphalt up, but that's all to be understandable, so thank you.
Sure.
And I'm pretty sure you wouldn't be able to do too much aggressive landscaping without impeding the traffic flow that goes around the shopping center for ingress and egress, too. Are there any other questions that the commissioners have of the developer or the architect?
Not at this time, Anderson.
None at this time. Jensen. Not at this time, Richardson.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing.
So at this time, if you have any public comment, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or also using star six. I will call on public comment one at a time and then lower your hand. So at this time, I am asking Michael's iPhone, or excuse me, iPad to unmute. And go ahead, sir.
Hi, actually, this is Anisa. I'm using someone else's iPad. My name is Anisa Booze. I just have a quick question. I know that there's standards for historical buildings. I'm curious, is there any plans for accessibility such as handicap parking spots or elevators in case there's anybody that needs that use in order to live in the residential area above? I was just curious.
This is Ezra Ivy, one of the architects. There wasn't a plan for an elevator because it would make the project cost prohibitive, but it's not a requirement. It's just a necessity to have sometimes, but there is accessible parking up front.
To access the commercial.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Does that answer your question, man?
Yeah, I was just concerned about the possibility of someone who wanted accessibility to rent, and there might be any kind of concern in regards to them not being able to rent due to accessibility. So that was just a question. Thank you so much.
This is Chris Garnett. Back to the architect. I would say that, I would speculate that you'd have to comply with whatever the building codes require for this kind of a development, mixed-use residential and commercial to comply with that. So I'm sure this is in compliance with that. Wouldn't that be correct?
Correct.
Very good.
And then it
Anybody else in the public like to comment?
Yes, I saw that Sharon Merovich has unmuted herself. So Sharon, if you had a question?
Yes, thank you very much. It's Sharon Merovich from the Twomey Heritage Committee. We are not the Historical Society. And so I would like to know what we commented on, and that is that we truly believe that this building has a potential to be a very nice addition to the city by providing commercial and residential areas. It's a good infill project. However, it would be a truer statement of Sonora's architectural heritage if the dormer was removed and the roof line of the sod were a completely horizontal line, not interrupted by the structure, the dormer, topknot, whatever you want to call it. Flat fronts and horizontal roof lines are very typical and predominate the style of our business buildings. The dormer or topknot is basically an architectural flourish added by the architect and could be easily removed.
Thank you, Sharon. I appreciate those comments. Sir, go ahead.
Oh. If that has to be done, I'm going to withdraw the project. That was the reason of creating a statement that's reminiscent of the history of our town, Sonora, that I wanted to do this. If it has to be kind of more blending in and I'll call it vanilla, I don't want to go ahead and do it. So I go on record saying that.
This is Ezra, protect as well, and one of the other reasons that was, you know, there are, there are some elements in the downtown historic district, such as the Candy Vault, that have some type of dormer or kind of an element similar, not exactly the same, but typical of the Victorian style, you know, and the gold rush Victorian is a little bit different than a regular Victorian, but we were trying to kind of tie things in without duplicating.
This is Rochelle, just a matter, a point of, kind of a point. When the, when the public comments, it doesn't mean that you, that people need to, that you guys need to respond. If the planning commissioners have a question, they will ask. And then you can respond to that. People from the public can make comments. That doesn't mean that they're going to get a response, or there's going to be a feed, a comment back to them. But when the planning commission takes it back, then if they have any questions, they'll ask that of you, okay?
Thanks for that clarification, Rochelle. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment on this project?
And commissioners, I'm just doing one final check to see if there's any other public comment. At this time, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. Commissioners?
I have a point I'd like to make. John Richardson?
Go ahead, John.
Well, as I, when I looked at what the, our reaction from our people that are concerned about our historical things and everything that's done and all this and that, I realized, as I said, my feelings, I can understand their plight. However, to remove that, my first reaction, it would just completely throw the whole thing into a very difficult architectural plan again, which I'm sure that this developer spent a fair amount of time and money developing this, and I understand Sharon Merovich's plight and concern, but I sure don't want to lose this project over the removal of the dormer, and I don't feel that, I think we should go ahead with this project with the dormer, even though maybe it's not totally acceptable by everybody. We need that down there, definitely. It's a great project. It looks very good. So my reaction is, no, we can't ask to remove the dormer.
I have a comment.
And who is this?
Peter Giarso.
Okay, Peter.
I've been on the member of the Historical Society for about 25 or 30 years, currently on the board. I see no problem with this building, and I think it really adds to the architectural history and is compatible with everything we have in Sonora. So I I would think we should, I like the dormer and it should be kept on the building.
Any other commissioners which which to comment on this?
No comment. Ron Jensen.
Kevin, do you have anything you want to add?
Reiterate that the that eclectic captured in this building, I think that it.
Can you hear me?
Now.
I I couldn't hear every, couldn't hear everything there. Kevin, did you start over?
Yeah, just just reiterate that eclectic architecture of downtown is really captured in this building. I I like what I see here.
Very good. I'll chime in. I really applaud the developer's idea for commercial apartment rental space. And I think this is a great infill project. This has already been mentioned. I had some concerns consistent with Sharon Merovich's about the flow of this, where it sits in a shopping center, even though this is probably not part of the shopping center. But I had some architectural concerns with something that would try to create a better blender of marriage between the west end of the shopping center and the and the pharmacy building. But it it does provide for a brick facade. It introduces people to architectural features that are that are downtown already. But so I I I can live with what's here, and I I really do see this as a wonderful opportunity for mixed-use, commercial and residential. So I support it. There's any other discussion? If not, then I'll I'll call for the questions. Sort of like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Is this John Richardson?
Yes, based on the conditions of the general requirements based by the city, I think it's a great project. It's fantastic. It's going to really open up the entrance to downtown area coming in on Stockton Street. So I'm all for it.
Is there a second?
Anderson.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the question. You want to do a roll call there, Rochelle?
Sure. Chairman Garman.
Aye.
Vice Chair, sorry, Vice Chairman Richardson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Forsen.
Aye.
Very good. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate the developer's time and efforts here.
Thank you all very much. It it'll be a very nice project when it's done. Thank you.
Good luck.
All I have to do is.
When you plan on breaking ground, I'm curious.
Okay. Is Rich Murdock there? He's left us. He's the contractor. You know, I it it depends on when we can finish up with bank financing and get the contractor freed up and so I sooner the better for me. I I'm, we'll be on the phone tomorrow to sort of find out what they have to say. You don't have to shut me off.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duerr. Appreciate it.
Peter, thanks, guys, ladies, everybody.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the public hearings, item three, which is an application by Hazy Bulldog Farms LLC for consideration of a resolution that recommends approval to the city council of an ordinance that amends the development agreement to allow for an adult-use cannabis retail business located at 1243 Mono Way in a commercial zone. The accessory parcel number is 056190012. Staff.
Chris, I'm going to turn this over to Nubia Goldstein and the city administrator, Mary Rose Rudekanga. They are actually going to talk about this application.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Very good.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public and staff. Before you tonight is, it's a resolution for your consideration or recommendation of an ordinance the first amendment between the develop, in the development agreement for Hazy Bulldog. As the commission is familiar, it's currently operating as a medicinal cannabis dispensary in the city of Sonora. And if the commission will recall, several months ago, we did come before you with amendments to the zoning code and an informational item to give you a little bit of the ins and outs of what the council had directed staff to prepare as it relates to cannabis regulations within the city. So what has happened since our meeting in October, the council has adopted an ordinance to make some changes to the scope of of cannabis operations. And primarily what they're looking at and what's relevant for tonight's consider for your consideration is the allowance of adult-use cannabis as well as medicinal. And that is precisely what the operator of Hazy Bulldog has submitted a request for for the city to process an amendment to their development agreement. And so that that's what's before you tonight. It's very likely that in the near future, the operator will have additional changes to the business structure, potentially the location that will come before the planning commission. But tonight is very, very specific what we're looking at. It's a very specific change to the development agreement, which has been included in the packet and in red line form. And it's really just to allow for the operator's ability to sell adult-use cannabis. In essence, their requirement under the development agreement will be they'll have to maintain their medicinal use license with the state if they still wish to continue with adult use. So that that will be a requirement moving forward is that that that's how the project started and that's how it should continue. There now will just add on the the type 10 license to allow. And so in all other respects, the development agreement remains the same. The public benefit structure remains the same. The location for now remains the same. Very shortly hereafter, we're probably looking at the next planning commission meeting next month. The planning commission will consider an amendment to the conditional use permit associated with this project. And the reason for that is all all of the concerns potentially around selling adult-use cannabis, which is retail, recreational cannabis, will be addressed revisions of the conditional use permit. So if they're, what we're doing at the staff level is coordinating with all the departments to make sure that there aren't any additional concerns that need to be addressed because they're looking at selling a different type of cannabis, in essence, to beef up the conditions, if you will. Think about things related to public safety, access, parking, things like that. But again, that is something that will come before you, but that's not before you tonight. Tonight, we're we're strictly looking at the development agreement and making the change to allow for adult use. So that really is the essence of the development agreement amendment. I can answer any questions you may have. I believe the applicant is available as well to answer any questions from the planning commission.
Oh, this is Commissioner Garnon, Mary Rose. And I just want to clarify that in last November in 2020, the city council adopted ordinance number 873, which amended the cannabis business pilot program and changed how cannabis dispensaries can operate. So it does allow, based on their action in ordinance 873, it allows the sale of adult-use cannabis in the same manner as medicinal cannabis. Am I right there?
That is correct, sir.
That's all I have to ask. Any other, any other commissioners have questions of staff or the Mary Rose or the city attorney?
I have a question, Anderson.
Go ahead, Kevin.
With, it seems with your explanation that the location is my my biggest concern here. And are we amending to this particular location at this time? I I just, I'm having an issue with that. Are we kind of putting the cart before the horse? With adding that much traffic to that location before their location change?
That, well, it's something that we have talked about with staff and Rochelle, you you can address it. From from a strict, strictly looking at it from a contractual point of view, there is no change, right? And we're really looking at just adding a license type. The the additional concerns associated with traffic and more more foot traffic and vehicle traffic as well is something that we're we're looking at and and trying to find creative ways of addressing. And that is exactly what I was referencing as part of the conditional use permit amendment that will be coming before the planning commission because staff is aware that that is is a concern and that needs to be addressed for the time that this operator remains at this location. And the whole point from the perspective of getting direction from the council to move forward with allowing for adult use and balancing the operator's desire to get up and running as as quickly as possible. Now, that's precisely why we're processing the change at the current location, knowing that most likely the applicant will submit and further application in the near future to change locations to accommodate what they anticipate will be a lot more traffic and more business.
Yes, and if I may, Commissioner Anderson, also, security concerns as well will be brought up during the conditional use permitting in the next commission meeting as well. So all those, all those conditions will be addressed during the discussion of the conditional use permit.
And one thing I I forgot to mention to the commission before, if the if you recommend the change to the development agreement and the council adopts changes to the development agreement, the operator can't just begin operating. There's there's a process that that they need to go through. So we have to wait the required number of days for the ordinance to become effective, so it takes a little bit longer. But more importantly, they need to operate within the confines of the development agreement and the conditional use permit. So those changes need to be processed and set in place, and they have to follow that before they can basically begin selling adult-use cannabis. So it's not, it's not as if even as of tonight or after the council adopts the development. If they if they adopt the development agreement, they can automatically just start, you know, changing their business model the next day. It's going to take a little bit of time, again, to put everything in place and make sure that they're complying with all the requirements.
Nubia, correct me if I'm wrong, but just so they have a better understanding, because we had a lot of discussion about this. Development agreements can't be conditioned. However, the use permit, they, the development agreement will not be effective unless the use permit is modified and the conditions are set for the change from medicinal to the recreation, the adult use. And there is a timing thing that we talked about as we went through this process because the use permit is approved by the by the planning commission. It does not, does not require city council approval. But the development agreement has to go on to the city council, so the development agreement actually won't be heard by the council until March. And then there's a two-reading process, and it doesn't go into effect for another 30 days after that. So all of the requirements under the use permit will be completed by March. And the development agreement won't even go into effect until April, correct?
That's correct. So the development agreement and the conditional use permit work together under the city's cannabis ordinance. And so the operator has to comply with it. They can't pick and choose. And as Rochelle mentioned, all the conditions, the, it's not necessarily that the development agreement can't contain conditions, but it makes more sense for them to be included as a condition of approval for the CUP. And so that's the structure that it's that that we've created. And and that's where the changes would come for the onsite-specific requirements and restrictions. Again, because it's case-by-case specific based off of the location and concerns with surrounding community, and it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. So that's precisely why we designed it that way. And the two work together, but yes, so Rochelle, to to answer the question, the development agreement will take a while for it to become effective, just because it's got to go through a little bit of a longer process. But and that's precisely why we're processing it this way. So we're estimating if everything goes to schedule, the operator most likely will be able to begin changing their business model and selling adult-use cannabis in May is what I I think we we concluded.
Then the other, just to let you guys, the commissioners know, we did do an advisory notice on this. We also did a 300-foot notification as required. The only comments other than as we, the police chief is well aware that we're going to work through some of the security issues and can work through those things with them, with the police chief and with the operator as we work through the use permit conditions. But parking was a concern. It was brought up outside of conversations with the police. It was brought up by the fire department as well as the city engineer. So we included that in the staff report to make it so that everybody is aware that we that we do know parking is a concern. And I don't, I had that discussion with the applicant and and they do have probably some information. I don't know if they'll provide it to you tonight, but they will as part of the use permit process, if not tonight.
Commissioners, have any other questions for staff?
Is this an opportunity now to to make our comment on this project, Chris?
John, not not quite yet, John. I want to go through the public hearing first.
Okay, we're good. I I just wanted to make sure I was clarified. I I can wait. Go ahead.
Okay.
So one.
Any other commissioners?
No.
Any other commissioners have questions of staff?
Nothing from Ron Jensen.
No, Anderson.
Oh, Giarso, no.
Peter?
No.
Okay.
So Chris, just a housekeeping thing. After we finish with the applicant, I would recommend that we limit a public two, three minutes when we start through the public process under the hearing.
Yeah, good, good suggestion. I was gonna, I was gonna call for that. Do we have what appears to be a lot of people wanting to comment on this?
Yeah, there's several people on the meeting, so.
Okay, very good. Well, if we're done with staff input, then is the, is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, sir. This is Jeff Muzio with Hazy Bulldog Farms.
Hi, Jeff. Is there anything you want to add to what the staff's presentation's already provided for?
I would love to add a little bit to it. I want to say that you guys' concerns are absolutely warranted. And not only that, but we've taken them into consideration. We've already procured an extra 40 parking spots, which is ample parking. That's, you know, we're talking like Walmart status. So I believe we've gone above and beyond where we should be with that. Because currently, I think we have about four in front of the spa, in front of our property and then eight in the public space right next door. So we currently have about, you know, 10 to 12 spots. And we're getting that up to a total of 52 spots. And that's already procured and that's already in effect. Security, I'd love to wait until the next one because I don't really want to discuss security in a public manner like this. But we've definitely upped our security. We've hardened our exterior to the building. And we've also gotten some pretty awesome tech involved with our camera systems that not only we can use, but we love to hand out to the local police department if they're ever in need.
Okay. Does anybody in the commission have a question for the applicant before we move on to the public hearing?
No, Anderson.
No, Jensen. No, Richardson.
No, Giarso.
No, Garnon. Okay. We'll open the, thank you very much, Mr. Muzio, and we'll open the public hearing. So Rochelle, I'm going to let you call these people up and please, folks, keep your comments within three minutes. We have a lot of people that want to comment on this, so I appreciate a three-minute maximum time to present anything. And then also, please, don't repeat yourselves. I mean, there's a, there's common themes to these kind of things. And if you find that other people have made comments that are consistent with what you're going to say, just say you either, you know, just make your comment very brief, but let's. just say you either, you know, just make your comment very brief, but let's not repeat ourselves, folks, because we don't have all night to do this. Okay, thank you.
And I will be, Commissioner Garnon, this is Mary Rose Ruti Kanga. I'll be moderating the public comment. So the first comment you have is from Cynthia Hellman. And again, I'm going to ask you to unmute those, please do not unmute yourself until I ask you to unmute to make sure that we're keeping decorum with public comment. I will then lower your hand and then you can make your comment. Again, please don't unmute yourself until I ask you to unmute. Thank you. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Okay, thank you for this time. My name is Cynthia Hellman. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and I work as a school counselor at one of our elementary schools. I'm also a trained suicide interventionist and provide suicide prevention trainings to county members. And I do believe that in addition to the efforts being made for parking and security, that there's going to need to be some concerted efforts being made for suicide prevention training. Because there's numerous academic studies that have found that with marijuana use, especially among high school students, the rate of suicide has increased and doubled in some cases. Users were three and a half times more likely to attempt suicide. And, and of course, we know about the permanent IQ loss of eight points. There's learning skills that are impaired. Marijuana use has been linked to increased chance for mental illness such as addiction, schizophrenia, depression and anxiety. And our current California Healthy Kids Survey in our county showed that a quarter of our students in grades nine through 11 are having thoughts of suicide now. And a quarter in grade 11 are already using marijuana. Sonora Planning Commission, our kids need help. Let's learn from these studies. Let's focus on positive coping, healthy brains and positive mental health. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping your brief comments concise and brief. Next up.
Your next public comment is coming from Ty Atkins, and I'm asking you to unmute now. Go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is T Y Atkins. County resident, educator, parent, grandparent for 50 years. I want to thank you as the planning commission for rejecting this proposal last October. It only makes sense that you reject it for the same reasons tonight. I urge you not to listen to the smooth talk and pot for profit rationale behind the pro-pot argument. It only reps, represents a very small special interest group in our county. In your foresight and planning for what is best for the future of Sonora, recreational pot clearly can't be in Sonora's future plans. In your position as planning commissioners, you've been appointed to guard the integrity of our historical community. And recreational pot shops have never been a part of the history of Sonora. Why would it be a part of its future? You had very legitimate reasons to reject the proposal in October. And I plead with you to stand strong and reject it again tonight. As you plan for the city of Sonora's bright future, I plead with you not to include adult recreational pot shops in the future of Sonora. There was much talk about the historic value of not only our community in Sonora, but also our county in general. And I, I just want to remind you that this decision, it sounds so innocent on the front end. It sounds like it's, oh, we're just going to add recreational pot to the program in the marketplace. I just plead with you, do not open that door. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, your next public speaker is Commissioner is Michael's iPad. I'm gonna ask you to unmute now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ms. Anisa, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing me to comment. I just wanted to make a comment. I understand the desire to go to recreational, especially obviously in the community here, specifically with the city and the budgets. We all know if we are all in connection with Big Pharma, we know that their desire is that we would not see medicinal cannabis be opened up. So right now, basically what we're doing is we're allowing recreational to be opened up because we know that's where the money's going to come from. Why? Because Big Pharma is blocking the use of medicinal cannabis in many ways, because we know that that's where the money will go and it's much cheaper and much more cost effective for someone to learn how to use medicinal marijuana correctly and CBD. Unfortunately, now, we all know as business people, anyone who's in business knows that when you want to go, you want to increase your income, you want to have big revenue, then of course you're going to go to recreational marijuana, because the doors will be opened. The floodgates will be opened. And I understand that from a budget and standpoint. And obviously in the city, knowing that we open this up will just create great revenue for our community. But I would urge everybody to think that this actually is going to be opening up opportunity that will start to reflect in our children and in the youth, because we know that when recreational gets out there, the access even gets bigger. I'm not saying that it does not have access now. We know kids get it. But I will say that as soon as we open up that opportunity for recreational marijuana to become such public ease to adults, it's just going to open up the opportunity for our youth to have greater access to that. I've been in drug rehabs with kids that started out smoking. I've went through drug rehabs with kids who have been exposed to things. We all know, everybody's shaking their head and thinking gateway drug, it is. And if anybody does any research, we know it is. It goes into meth. I've seen spice. I've seen kids go out. So anyways, I just want to leave that out to you and I hope there's others speaking. Take care.
Thank you. Next up.
Um, your next public speaker is Randy Handbell. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Okay, thank you very much and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here in this open forum. Look, I agree with all the previous speakers. I'd like to add a couple of things. If you look at what's happened, where they've done this, opened up to recreational cannabis, cannabis, they've increased the problems and increased the costs, cost of the city and the cost of the county, which is a point you really need to coordinate with the county. The county and the city ought to be in lockstep if you're going to do this. I personally am opposed to it and I'm opposed to it for the impact on the kids. Increasing the access to kids, there's clear day, day that shows irreversible brain damage to, to kids, reducing their IQs in effect and their ability to, to perform in, in the learning process and, and in the job performance, et cetera. And they become, they become less than less than what they could be in terms of productive citizens of the community. I don't want to see the city or the county or the state having to end up taking care of kids because they got on pot early. And the comment is, well, they're getting it anyway, like someone else said. But you're increasing the ability and the access of, of the drug to people. It is a gateway drug. You're increasing the problems. The unintended consequences of this are immeasurable. Don't do it. Don't do it. It is going to be costing the county and the city more than you ever thought it would. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, sir. Next up, please.
Your next public speaker is Janine. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, thank you for this chance to express my disapproval of this. I would urge you to please reject this once again. The same reasons are valid. Recreational pot is not good for our county. A lot of arguments I hear is marijuana is necessary for people who have medical reasons, but that's already available and we don't need this. It's been proven in other counties that this increases crime and costs much more money than it raises. Please do not just pass this for the monetary gain. I would ask you to please try to keep our county and our children safe, and this does not move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
At this time, I don't see any other hands raised. If you have a public, oh, excuse me, one just popped up. Hold on just a moment. This public comment is coming from Bob. I've asked you to unmute. Bob, we can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Is that better?
Yes, go ahead.
There we go. Yeah, this is Bob Kirk. Recently, I've been hearing the argument that marijuana is not a gateway drug. But rather, people turn to drugs because of bad things happen to them as children. People who say that have failed to dig deeper to understand one of the leading causes of bad childhood experiences is actually kids' parents smoking pot and doing drugs, either recreationally or illicitly. Not to mention that children using marijuana just makes it so much more, excuse me, not to mention that parents using marijuana just makes it so much more accessible to their children. Marijuana fuels a vicious generational cycle of child abuse and drug abuse. In November, the city council turned a deaf ear to the community and passed the recreational marijuana ordinance, fully knowing that they would receive so-called donation money from Jeff Muzio and Hazy Bulldog Farms. We had pro quo. Of course, Jeff has been going around contributing money to the community causes. He cast his marijuana business in the best possible light. It's like putting a whip on a pig. The money the city of Sonora will receive from Jeff Muzio and Hazy Bulldog Farms may seem like a panacea for the city's budget ills. However, the only one truly making money is Jeff Muzio. He is taking the profits and leaving the community at large to pay for the carnage. Apparently, there has been no market research, business plan or other financial study carried out by the city as to the true economic benefits or costs. Colorado has years of experience with recreational weed. To quote former Colorado Governor John Hickenlooper, marijuana tax revenue is a drop in the bucket. It's not going to pay for early childhood education or solve any big social ill. The last time this topic came before the planning commission, you put the concerns of the community and concerns for children ahead of the false hope of clearing tax revenue ahead of true costs. I ask you to do the right thing again, knowing that allowing Jeff to sell marijuana for adult use, I guess that's the new term for recreational use, will only make it that much easier for people to access the drug, take it home and feed the generational drug abuse cycle and continue to degrade our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would wish to comment?
Yes, commissioners, we have another public comment by Christine Reeves. I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to unmute.
Hello, thank you so much for letting me speak. I myself am a former pot user. I smoked marijuana every day for six years and I can testify to the fact that I forget who said it earlier, but it didn't benefit me in one way. I, it made me escape reality and not face problems and run from my problems and run with people that were not really in my best interest to be around. And my husband and I also for the last five years until COVID hit have run, celebrate recovery in this county and we have not seen any person that has really benefited from recreational marijuana. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else out there?
Commissioners, at this time, I don't see any other public comment. I will ask one more time. If you have public comment on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're on a phone, please dial star six, you raise your hand. And I'm gonna do one last scroll to make sure if I see somebody in the audience raising their hand. And at this time, commissioners, I do not see any other public comment.
Okay, very good. I appreciate everybody for keeping your comments brief, concise, to the point and for fresh information from each one of you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Bring us back to the commission. Commissioners.
I have a comment.
Just, who is this, John Richardson?
Uh, did you get me, Chris? Were you, did you hear me? John Richardson, I have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to speak. The first thing I'd like to bring out is how can we as commissioners accept this type of thing? The first thing, I agree with the public wholeheartedly. It's a complete disaster waiting to happen and on its way. There's other ways to raise money. Perfect example of the beautiful project we just opened up downtown in the lower part of Sonora. The word recreation as, as a way to describe this is a joke. Is this what we do for recreation? Go get high and get crazy and ruin our minds and our brains and let children have access to go into the back room, into the dresser and reach in, oh, there's dad's marijuana. Wow, let's try it. If you as commissioners, look at findings on page, I believe, two of the app, of the information tonight, it says under C, will not be detrimental to the health, safety and well, and general welfare. Really? Are you kidding me? It's not detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare? Drugs destroy youth. Drugs are destroying America right now. Just look at the death rate and look what's happening to our young people and looking, just look at what is happening to our society. We don't need any more available. There's enough out there now. I can't possibly go along with this in any way and have, be able to go against my community people. When I hear all these people voice their detrimental feeling about this, how can I say yes to this? This is a, this is horrible. So I'm asking my commissioners to do just what we did last time. Say no. Maybe the city will finally come up and have some serious discussions, some evaluations by professionals to find out really how much money we're gonna make here for the city and how much are we gonna destroy? How much, how many lives are we gonna ruin? What about our young kids? They're already having enough trouble with COVID and the schools not being open. There's enough problems out there. So I ask my commissioners, please do what we did. Let's say no. This is not the answer. This is not recreation. And it certainly is detrimental to health, safety and general welfare. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
I have something.
Who is this? Okay, Peter, can you talk in your microphone a little closer? I can barely hear you.
Yeah, okay. That better?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a little better.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about the history of marijuana and Jeff will know what I'm talking about here. Marijuana in 1972 was reclassified as a Schedule I controlled substance. And what that meant, marijuana was put in the same category as LSD, P O D and heroin. And the criteria for Schedule I controlled drug use, highly addicted, no medicinal use and lack of attempted safety and use. Well, that's kind of been dispelled by the use of marijuana. But there is a move afoot to reclassify marijuana to a, what is called a Schedule II drug, which means it will be available with a prescription. And I'm gonna read you a little something here. What would happen if marijuana was reclassified as Schedule II? We've got a new administration in Washington and big pharmaceutical companies are pushing this. Marijuana advocates remain generally irked about the continued Marijuana advocates remain generally irked about the continued Schedule I status of marijuana. They want to go to Schedule II because they, there is some evidence that there is a medicinal use for marijuana. Therefore, it's time marijuana is at least reclassified to Schedule II for the reasons to be explained. But this, if this change happens, what would it mean for the marijuana industry? Well, if you look down the road, if marijuana is classified as a medicine, retail marijuana dispensaries will no longer be selling medicinal marijuana because if somebody needs medicinal marijuana, they'll go get a prescription from their physician. It'll be filled in a pharmacy, and then insurance companies will pay for it. So, so the industry does not want this to be reclassified. But when big pharmaceutical companies get behind this, believe me, it is going to go through because they have a huge influence on Washington. So, this is something to think about. You know, I, I think you're going to see, if this, if it goes to Schedule II, you're going to see a, a big decrease in the number of, of retail marijuana and alcohol in this country. And that, and that would, would have effect, I think, here. I don't know. Something to, there's something to think about.
Does that conclude your comments, Peter?
Yeah, I'm sure. That's it, yeah. Any questions? I'll be glad to try and answer.
Thank you.
I have some comments. Ron Jensen.
Go ahead, Ron.
Well, I've listened to both sides of this story for months now, and I feel pretty strongly about it too. But there are several discrepancies in both sides of what people are saying. Well, you all know that marijuana is legal in some form in close to half the states in the United States. In fact, the majority of the country supports the legalization of marijuana right now. And it could lead to billions of dollars in tax revenue. And the states that have legalized marijuana are doing just fine. The, you know, the legalization and more pot use is inconclusive also. It doesn't mean that there's going to be more pot being smoked because we legalize it. I think regulating marijuana makes our society safer. And it also helps us understand marijuana's health effects in the long run. I'm not saying that I'm for this in Sonora. I can drive across the bridge, or anybody can, and get all the pot they want or edibles or whatever in Calaveras. So, I have to say that I voted against this in the beginning, and I'm pretty sure that's the same vote now, but we do need to look at the facts. Everybody does. But basically, that's it for me.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
I'll weigh in on this. This is Chris Garnon. I've given all this thought since our last discussion in October about this. And I, I, I think we all have different opinions about the impacts of cannabis. And you can read a study that, that can take you one direction or the other. It's, it's totally 180 degrees. I'm not, I'm not interested in seeing my community adversely affected by the effects of alcohol, drugs, or any other substance. But I gotta, I gotta, I gotta tell you, recreational marijuana, medicinal marijuana is solely an adult enterprise. It's not intended to be dispensed to children. It's unfortunate that in a lot of situations under bad mentoring or whatever, that there are instances of, of adolescent use of drugs and alcohol and other substances. We, as a commission, I don't think tonight really are being called upon to make that kind of a decision. This is a land use decision. And this is an applicant that's already been allowed to apply based on an ordinance that was provided for by the city council back in November. If, basically, they've opened the door, the door is wide open for people to apply to dispense recreational cannabis products. Now, if you don't want to use cannabis products, then don't. But we have good geographical constraints in place that we adopted a couple of years ago as a planning commission. There are confines as to who can dispense it, where, and it's very specific that way. Allowing this would eliminate or help to eliminate the black market that has existed in, in pot, marijuana, cannabis products forever. It's, it's, it's nothing but a black market. So, there would be a, a benefit to generate tax revenue for any entity that allows it to be sold. And under the confines of the, the, the agreements that we have, the cannabis business pilot program, all that's been analyzed. So, basically, ordinance 873 adopted by the city council in November allows adult-use dispensaries. Up to three of them, as a matter of fact, and in the zones that we already approved. That's a done deal in that regard. Why not, my feeling is, why not offer a permit or allow someone that's already shown a proven track record for a couple of years to operate as a recreational dispensary also in addition to medicinal aspects? So, I can't say I don't support this whole proposal tonight. That's it for my comments.
I have another comment, if I can make it.
Go ahead, John.
Well, Chris, I appreciate you as a person and as, as an individual. How can you, after listening to the amount of input from our public, challenge what they've said? I have to live why I'm a commissioner. I was voted to represent the people of this town and county. And I just can't live with myself when I see every person that called in tonight saying no, including counselors. I would like to see, I would like to ask Rochelle, has the city ever really done a comprehensive study about what really happens? Is marijuana really all okay? Or does it really cause suicides like we heard tonight? Can my commissioners want to buy suicides for kids? The more marijuana in the drawers in the house means more opportunity for kids to get it. And I'm listening to my fellow residents telling me, no. Randy Helfelt has been around this area a long time politically. He knows a lot. What did he say? What did everybody else, counselors, mothers? I don't know how, I love you guys, but I don't know how you can live with yourself and go against and say, oh, yeah, it's okay, we'll get some revenue, and it's been accepted every place else in the county and in the state. It's all okay all across the country. Sure, that's fine, but sometimes more isn't better. It becomes worse. And I am concerned myself. My feelings, my heart tells me that you don't go against your county residents. If I had five, six, seven people calling in tonight saying, yes, good, let's go with it, hey, it's all right. We didn't get one person say yes. And I feel that I represent my people. And I love you guys, and I love you, Chris. You're a good man. I've been with you on the commission a long time. But I hate to come lock horns with you on this. I would like to ask you, how can you live with yourself when you have all these people call in here and say no?
I can live with myself real well on that, Sean. Everybody's got an opinion on it.
Okay, that's fine.
The people of Coromandel County just.
Mr. Muzio, I'm sorry, we could not, we could not accept your comment. That is closed off at that moment, sir.
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're done with public comments. Thank you, Mr. Muzio. But back to what John mentioned. The people that many times will speak at a, at a planning commissioner, city council meeting, usually show up to oppose something. I have no problem with that. I totally respect that. And a lot of people expect us to act responsibly as commissioners, given our task. And that's what I think we're doing tonight. We're talking through this whole thing. We've had public input from people that don't want something. I respect that. I look at this as a land use issue as a, as a planning commissioner for the city of Sonora. The city council has already opened the door for dispensaries, adult recreation dispensaries in addition to the contract that we already have with, with medicinal dispensaries. So, I, I, you have now an application from a person that's already hit the ground running on a medicinal dispensary that wants to go on ahead and, and purvey adult products. And just like I said, it's not meant, it's not targeted for tax revenue or to, to hit for kids. It's, these are things you have to work through because it's an adult enterprise. It's like, hey, do I want to take my kids down to the liquor store and have them go on ahead and pick out a bottle of bourbon? Heck, there's all kinds of bourbon sitting around my house. I have no problem with that, but they're not helping themselves to it. I'm monitoring that. I'm, I'm mentoring them. I'm counseling them as kids. That's, that's how it comes down to. So, in my capacity as a planning commissioner, I look at this as a land use issue, and the door's already been opened by action taken back in November. I do that with good conscience. Any other commissioners have any comments?
I have an answer, a question for Rochelle.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. Has the city really done a study by the medical world, the psychological world, on how is this really legitimately okay to people's minds? What about this concept of suicide and what Randy Hemphill said? And what is out there? Has, has anyone even looked at this? Is this really right? No one, I don't think, really knows. Do we have anybody in our city that can honestly make a scientific study or a statement as to, yes, it's okay or not okay? Do we really know? All we hear is this hearsay. Oh, yeah, it's fine. You'll be okay. You'll be all right. No, it's not good. Has the city, I'm just asking you, ever done a study on the true use of marijuana?
I'm going to let Mary Rose comment on that. Thanks, Mary Rose.
Hi, John. This is Mary Rose Ruti-Konga, the city administrator. So, as to your question, I don't believe the city has done a thorough analysis or a thorough study. They are merely responding to the legalization that the voters of California authorized under Prop 64. And under, and under that authority of Prop 64, that is how they are allowing for the use of recreational cannabis within the city of Sonora. So, again, I don't believe, although there was a lot of discussion in regards to the use of medicinal cannabis when that was brought forth to the council, I believe in 2017, 2016, 2017. I, I cannot answer 100% whether or not there was an actual study. However, as far as recreation goes, they are merely authorized to do it under the voter-approved Prop 64.
May I ask you a question? Why can the city make a statement on our application saying that there's no evidence of any type of damage that will be no, not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare? How can they make that statement when they haven't even done a study?
I can, I can provide additional information on that, Mary Rose. So, what you're looking at in terms of the findings really are predicated off of the development agreement standards set in, in state law. So, when we're looking, as I think it was Commissioner Garmin who mentioned, we're talking about a, from a land use perspective, whether or not it fulfills the requirements that are set in statute and that are more appropriate for land use and zoning. So, when we're looking at that context, and specifically for this project, this project has already essentially been approved and has been operational now for a few years. The city council has adopted an ordinance that has expanded the, the, the type of use for cannabis, and that's the policy perspective that's really indicative of the council's role in setting policy for the city. And so, what we're doing from a staff perspective is bringing it to the planning commission to evaluate, again, within those parameters. So, I, I just want the commission to be completely clear on that because, again, it's very difficult sometimes, I think, to have the two mix. We're, we're not looking at what you would consider the, I guess, the maybe more medical type of ramifications potentially. And again, there's lots of studies out there that I think address this from both perspectives, but that is a discussion and a decision that's really in the purview of the city council. They raised that policy and made it very clear that they're comfortable with allowing adult-use cannabis within certain parameters. Those parameters are very clear. There cannot be any more than three dispensaries at any given time within city limits. They can only be within certain zoning zone, uh, zone, zoning areas. And they have to comply with a development agreement, a conditional use permit, and state law. So, it's, it's very clear cut that this isn't opening the doors for an industry that will overtake any of the business spaces essentially in the city. So, I, I just want to remind the commission, that's what, that's what we're looking at, and that's what we're focused on. So, again, understandably so, you may have personal feelings about cannabis and the impacts of that. But that, again, is that policy decision has been made, and what we're looking for is very specific to the technical aspect of this project and this location and the development agreement associated with it.
I have a question for you.
Please go ahead.
Can I, Mary, are you there?
Yes, sir. This is Mary Rose and your city attorney, Nubia Goldstein, responding.
I, I would ask our city commissioner a question. When we approved this, it was for medical, and it was very easily accepted by everyone because it was a, an ability for someone to deal with a medical situation. But at that time, we didn't talk about recreation, and there were really good reasons for medical. But is there anyone on the, out there that really knows what the advantage of the recreational is for? And how detrimental is it? Like I'm saying, there's no study. There's, nobody knows. It's just going because of its money. I'm sorry.
So, again, that's a, that's a policy decision with the city council. And the city council has already looked at the voter-approved Prop 64 and has, and has allowed for adult use within the city of Sonora limits. So,
For medical?
For both. Adult use and for medicinal.
Okay, originally, it was medical, okay. I have a problem with that, okay?
So, so again, on November, in November, they approved, I'm sorry, Nubia, and you can, please.
I'm aware of this, Mary. You don't have to tell me this. I'm aware of that, okay? I'm just saying that originally, we all went on the medical. That was fine. And then the door opened for recreational. But no one has done a study on what effect it has on children. And we heard people today, out there tonight, talk. How many said yes? Everyone said no. Doesn't that mean anything to you?
So, I, I don't make the policy, sir. The policy is made by your elected city council, and they've already decided for the use of, of adult-use cannabis. Again, when the, when medicinal was approved, that was prior to the implementation and approval of Prop 64 that allowed for statewide use of adult-use or recreational cannabis. I, I can't, I can't explain why the city council has not chosen to do further research on the effects of children, although Prop 64 is for adult use, not for child use. So, again, the policy decision has already been made by the city council, and we are looking at this decision based on a land use decision in front of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Jeff. Is he still there?
Who is this?
Peter DiRso. That, I have a question for Jeff. Is he still there?
Yes, I'm definitely still here if I'm able to talk.
One, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. One point of clarification, public comment has closed. If the chair wishes to open back up, then we'd have to be opening it up to the rest.
All right. Oh, oh, that's okay.
I'd rather hold off on, I'd rather hold off on opening up any more public comment here, Peter, because everybody had their shot already, but I'd be happy to entertain. But I'd be happy to entertain more comments from commissioners before we take any action.
I have, I have one comment. Having been a pharmacist for fifty years, I spent about ten years especially just studying marijuana. And one of the things that people don't realize is there's a lot of mixed marijuana use now. If you mix marijuana with alcohol and, for example, a prescription drug called Xanax, you end up with an automobile accident on Phoenix Lake Road with a death and a lot of injuries. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns about marijuana and there's a lot of mixed use. And it's just something that we need to be thinking about because we, we had a real bad example of that happening right here in Topeka County. That's all, just, just something to think about.
Commissioners, any other comments?
I have, I have one comment, Ron Jensen. There's been a lot of studies done. Am I on here?
Yes, you are, Ron. I can hear you.
Okay, there's been a lot of studies done. John's asking the city to make studies. Well, there's been studies done for years and years and years. And the more, the more that this comes into focus about legalization, the more we're going to learn about it. There's, it's a complex question of the carcinogenic properties of marijuana or the potential of altering teenage brain development. There's no, there's absolutely no proof anywhere that says that it's causing any of this because there hasn't been enough research on it. All I know is by legalizing this, it's going to take a harmful thing that you can buy in the black market. It's going to be regulated much more, a safer product. That's all I have to say. We, one thing I'd like to add is that the city council's already passed this. So it's not a, it's not a question of us saying, okay, it's, it's okay to do. So we're just amending the original agreement.
That's correct. And that's a really good point to bring up to the commission again. This, by voting on this, you're not making a policy decision in terms of how you feel about it from a social or medical aspect. It's strictly to allow an operator who, for all other intents and purposes, has, has actually been complying with all the requirements the city has established for him and make, making, complying with, with the requirements, working with the police department, fire, engineering, for all those concerns and has been operating in, in, in good form and made all the payment requirements under the development agreement otherwise. You're just amending the scope of that business in order to allow for another use, which is legal at the state level, highly regulated, and now has been an allowable use by the city council. That's really what the planning commission is, is looking at. So yes, it's a good reminder to let you know that that's really the scope of, of your action tonight.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Garnon again. Personally, I don't feel threatened by this because we have an applicant here who's hit the ground running for a couple of years. He's demonstrated to us that he can handle, he's been able to handle the business or that this operator's been able, been able to handle medicinal business, which was controversial in its infant stage. Let's face it. But he's been in compliance. Everything's, everything's happened just the way it, it, it was intended to. We're not reacting right now to a situation that has become a real sore in Sonora. We're basically allowing this person to expand their operation based on the confines of the zoning ordinances that we've, we've allowed these businesses to operate in and in the locations that they've been allowed to operate in. In, in many ways, I, I don't want to sound cheap here or cheap in this thing, but the horse is out of the barn. So if, if we turn this down tonight, I'm sure the applicant has an opportunity to appeal to the city council. I know how that's going to go. So why, why are we making an issue out of something that there's a thousand studies, probably millions of studies on cannabis use? I don't feel it's within our responsibility tonight to analyze that information. I think the voters of the state and this county and even in this city have already made their decisions on where they want to go with this. So as a land use decision and based on the confines that we've already put in place for where these dispensaries can operate from, you got a proven product here. I don't even know this guy. But I mean, I, why, why would I want to reject somebody that's doing a legitimate business for something we basically approve for another purpose?
Chris, I have a question for you.
Go ahead, John.
When we approved this and it went through, it was for a medical situation. That's a little different than recreation. Yes or no? Could you answer that?
Yeah, I, I'd say it's, it's a little bit different. It, it refines the, it refines the eligibility of the recipient, I guess you could say, or the person that's, that's purchasing the product.
Okay, so we okayed medical because it's for people that are dying sick and they get a prescription to go get that. Now, recre, yeah, it's a medicine. And that's why I and everybody on it said, yeah, it's okay. But we're talking recreation. What about what Mike Garthel said about the Xanax and the marijuana and the guy gets killed on Phoenix Lake? This is a totally different use of this product. Anybody can go buy it. Anybody can take it all he wants as much. That's my problem. This is a totally different animal. A prescription to get a drug, you can't go down and get Valium without a prescription and get high on it. You're telling, right now, we allowed medical marijuana prescription-wise, fine, for sick people. Now the door's open. You can go get it and use it all you want. And there's no, we don't even know what good it is or bad it is. But there's a big difference between what we okay. You're, you're making it sound like it's the same. It is not. A prescription drug versus a just go buy it. That's my problem, Chris.
I, I understand and I respect that, but we can speculate for hours on, on the toxicity.
Okay, I'm fine. I understand. Okay, I just wanted to get that out.
Commissioner Garnon.
Yes.
If I may, sir, this is Mary Rose again. Just maybe to help Commissioner Richardson, the, the voters of Topeka County, as well as the city of Sonora voters, did vote in favor of Prop sixty-four, what allows for the usage of adult-use recreational marijuana. The county of Topeka voters passed Prop sixty-four in November of two thousand sixteen by fifty-two point three percent of the vote. And the vote, the city of Sonora voters passed Prop sixty-four by fifty-six point three percent of the vote. Again, commissioners represent the city of Sonora voters. So just, I understand, Mr. Richardson, I just wanted to throw that additional data out for you as far as the representation in which you represent for the city of Sonora and how the voters voted for adult-use marijuana.
Yeah, I understand. Maybe none of those fifty-two percent people called in tonight. I, I totally understand that. They're, they're expecting us to do their business for them. And I really respect the people who oppose anything relative to cannabis and their opinions. I, I totally, my heart goes out to them. You bet. It's about a responsibility quotient. But we can talk about accidents, you know, misuse of any substance, whether you're on a medication, a prescription medication, or any combination of things. This does not necessarily give free license to that. It's already out there. That's been out there for many, many years. So I'm just looking at this purely from a land use standpoint and from the, the way we've defined and allowed any entrepreneur, anybody that wants to run a cannabis business, how they can operate in the city. And so that's it. Kevin, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I think Mary Rose hit my point about, you know, we're, we're representing, representing the voters of Sonora that voted for this. We have to figure out how to integrate that into our community next. That's our tough position. And it, it seems like that might be a little difficult for some people to, to kind of grasp that concept. We're not having a political discussion or a medical discussion. We're not using anecdotal evidence to create our zoning. We are, we are here to, to focus on that task at hand, like Chris is saying. That's pretty much all I got.
Commissioners, is there someone that would like to make a motion?
Anderson will motion to approve under the conditions provided by the staff.
That'd be a motion to approve a resolution that recommends approval of the city council of an ordinance that amends the development agreement to allow for adult-use cannabis?
Correct.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Ron Jensen.
Motion by Kevin Anderson, second by Ron Jensen. Any other discussion? Call for roll call vote.
Okay, Chairman Garnon?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Nay.
Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gorsuch?
No.
It passes with a three-two vote.
Thank you and thank you for the animated discussion and I appreciate the public's input on this tonight. Let's move on to the community development director's report.
So I'm going to keep this really short tonight. I do want to let you know that we definitely will be having a March meeting. I'm sure, will it be as animated as tonight's meeting is? Because we'll probably be discussing the same topics as we did tonight. And I also wanted to let you know that unless something really negative happens with COVID, we will be, you guys will be able to come into city hall so it won't be as crazy as it was tonight trying to get everybody online. We have a whole new camera system in the council chambers. It's pretty amazing. Our Chris Gorski, our administrative services director and Mary Rose, city administrator, and they've worked really hard with the contractor to get it set up and it, it works pretty slick. I don't know how it works, but eventually we'll all learn. And so that's a good thing. I also want to let you know that Darren Moradell, our building official, I know a lot of you have worked with him on projects or, or met him. He is retiring officially. He will be leaving us on the, the twenty-third will be his last day. He will be very much missed. Darren is a contracted building official, so the agency that we work with will work with us on getting his replacement placed. But he will be amiss and he was very much a part of our team and very much worked for the betterment of the city and had the city at, at heart. So he will be very missed. So that is all that I have for you guys tonight.
Yeah, this is, this is Garnon again. I worked with Darren on a few projects. He was outstanding. Is, is he, is he given an actual termination date or did I hear you say that, Rochelle? What were we doing in the meantime?
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third of February?
Yeah.
February?
Yeah, he's, he's, they want to go on a vacation, so he's wrapping it up early and he'll be out on the twenty-third. So he already retired once, so this is his second retirement, but he said this is real retirement.
Are you confident that we can fill the gap in case there's building activity after his departure?
Yeah, they're, we're, we're working with him now and, and we really monitor, I really monitor and work with the building officials so they understand Sonora. It takes a little bit because we are different. And my big thing is always customer service. So whoever comes along, they'll do a good job.
Great, thanks Rochelle. Is that it for you?
That's it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for a good meeting. Look forward to seeing you next month, if not sooner. Adieu.
Thank you.